Monday, March 1st, 2021 at 7:00 PM. Meetings normally held at the municipal offices are being held remotely, but with adequate alternative means of access and where required, public participation will be provided in accordance with the governor's March 12th, March 12th, 2020, orders ascending certain provisions of open meeting law. And I think meetings are typically broadcast by frontier community access television. I imagine that's the case tonight with remote connection at DeerfieldMA.us. So there we go. Roak Hall, let's see alphabetical Paul is not here today. Max Antis?
Max Antis present.
Hey, Rachel? Rachel Blaine, there she is. Yeah, sure, I see you. And Mary? Not yet.
I'm present, there I am. Rachel Blaine, present.
Oh, good, hi. Denise Mesa?
Denise Mesa in present.
Kathy Witrova? Present and welcome Kathy, really glad to have you. Oh, and there's Ann Mary and Mary Cludier in time to say, yes, you're here. Yes.
Present, hi.
Okay. And Annalee, so we do have a quorum and our majority today would out of the six of us here would be four. We've got that settled. Okay.
Five.
Oh, let's see, one, two, three.
Five out of six.
Six. No, because Max, Rachel, and Mary, Denise, Kathy, and Annalee.
One, two.
You didn't count you.
Four, five.
Max?
Annalee, Denise, Kathy, Rachel, and Mary, and Max. That makes five.
And Kathy? Max, Rachel, Ann Mary, Denise, Kathy, and Annalee.
Six. We're seven normally. It's six.
It was six.
Paul's absent, carry on.
We're ready for this discussion tonight.
Oh, well.
It's okay Denise, you're keeping us up on our toes. Let's see. I guess we review the mail before we review the minutes, that's interesting. We had three notices of public hearings, or four notices of public hearings, three in Greenfield and one in Montague. The three in Greenfield have to do with a proposed curb cut on Woodland Road, conversion of a two-family home to a three-family home on Conway Street, and to extend the general commercial zoning district along Bernardston Road. And that public hearing is on March 11th. In Montague, there's also going to be a public hearing on March 10th regarding a special permit for telecommunications facility in the rural business district. Maybe that means they'll get better internet. I don't know that all of you are receiving this mail, are you? And do you, if you're not, do you care to?
I think that it, I don't receive the mail, I don't think anybody else here does. And I think typically even when we met in person, we would, oh, go ahead, Rachel.
No, that's right. Ann Mary's right, we don't usually get the mail. We review it at the meeting.
Okay. All right. Well, the other piece of mail, which actually is interesting and perhaps will require a little bit of comment, is a request for comment from Saxon Signs. I think I did send that request out to all of you, although it really doesn't say too much. This is for the nine Greenfield Road red roof property making changes to the existing sign that is currently 500 square feet, reducing it to 323, which sounds like, oh, okay, that's good. However, it is a previously pre-existing non-conforming sign and the new sign also is not in compliance with our sign bylaws. I'd asked Jen, potentially Bob Walden, to sort of review that since we didn't really have the specs. And the question really is what sort of comment might we want to pass on to the ZBA in relation to this? So Jen, do you have any specifics? I think in particular, it has to do with the height of the sign, but.
I think the height stays the same. It's the, Bob, did you want to make comment?
Yeah, the pedestal that the sign on doesn't change, it's just the actual top of the sign being reduced in size, which they're doing because they keep having problems with the sign being destroyed in weather. So I mean, it just simply requires a change, a special permit to change it, even though it seems pretty simple to make it smaller.
Well, what, how, how is it out of compliance with our sign bylaws?
Oh, it's very out of compliance, it's super high up in the air, I mean, but it's,
The height.
I believe it's been there since 1979, if I'm correct. I mean, it, there wasn't even a bylaw. It's really, it's non-compliance with our bylaws now, it's a pre-existing non-conforming sign, so. The real determination comes from the zoning board, whether it's, you know, more detrimental than the sign that was already there, which, I mean, my opinion is.
Which isn't there anymore and it's covered in tarps and it looks like, it's awful, you know? I don't know if any.
That tarp is the sign, it's just a canvas sign that tore.
Okay.
They could put it back exactly the same, but they want to reduce the size, that's why I sent it to the zoning board.
Right, Jen?
Yeah, so I mean, they're making it less detrimental. So, you know, it's, it's, and they can, like Bob just said, if it's, if they do exactly what's there, they get to keep what's there. So it just happens to be that our bylaw says that they have to go to the zoning board of appeals if they want to change that size. So they're making it smaller, which is better. It's just, you know.
Yeah, so section 3421, or 3241, sorry, I got that number all wrong, 34, 3241, and the bylaw says, for changes in existing signs and non-conforming signs, provided such changes are within the limits established pursuant to section 3220, which is our size requirements, and that is not substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood, so. I don't know how you guys want to comment on it, but.
Do you have any, do you have any thoughts about this?
No, I was gonna say, you know, if they do it the same size and it's, then it's, I thought it was essentially grandfathered in, but if they are changing it substant, I mean, changing it in any way, I thought that they would have had to then comply with our current bylaws. No, okay.
The, well, the zoning board can decide whether it's substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood, the change. That, you know, that's their decision.
Right, okay, all right.
Oh, that's interesting.
Thank you. Yeah. So I mean, I would think that the suggestions would be that the sign is, you know, up kept and that there's no health or safety to anybody that's around, you know, like that could be a comment that the planning board would give, you know, in reference, you know.
That it's up, that the upkeep is maintained.
Yeah, because I mean, it's just, I mean, the zoning, the zoning board of appeals is going to make the ultimate decision of whether or not it's less or more detrimental to the neighborhood and whether or not they want it to comply with our current bylaw. But if you were to make a comment, it would be that it's, you know, kept up and it's health, you know, it's not going to fall on anybody or, you know, I mean, there's not too much leeway because it really is up to the zoning board of appeals to make that ultimate decision.
That makes sense for everybody, I don't know that we need, I don't think we really need to vote on this, but that we make a request that that the upkeep, that the sign is maintained. Okay. Alrighty. Ann Mary, minutes, can you take us through which ones need to be?
Annalee, I'm sorry, before we do that, did we welcome Kathy?
Kathy, welcome, welcome. Hello.
We officially welcomed her, so.
Right, right. Nice to have you Kathy.
Okay.
Does she know everybody? Yeah, let's go around and introduce. Kathy, hi, Annalee.
Acting Chair.
Right, Rachel.
Rachel Blaine.
Rachel Blaine.
Denise Mason, I think we were chatting before the meeting started.
Denise is our vice chair.
And Mary Cludier, I'm the clerk.
Welcome aboard.
I just realized I was muted, my apologies, hi, everyone.
And we have Max there too, he still is muted.
Max?
I'm here.
Hi, Max.
Hi.
Hey, Max.
Assistant Town Administrator, and then we also have Bob Walden, your building inspector, building officer, building commissioner.
Hi.
And I'm Chris Curtis. I work as the consultant to the planning board.
Hi, Chris.
Hi.
All right, good. It's nice to be nice. Works. And Mary, minutes?
All right, so it seems like we have minutes from December 28th, minutes from January 11th, and minutes from February. So the 1228 minutes would probably be the first ones to look at. Do you guys all have them in front of you?
And Mary, I reviewed all of them and out of, I forget which one now, but one out of the three had already been approved.
That's what I thought too, okay.
Yeah. Okay. And I just wanted to mention that you did a great job, they were very succinct to the point, so thank you.
Thank you.
Well done.
Thanks. So. The oldest one we have is 1228, I think that one was the one that was voted to, we've already voted on that one.
I thought it was the January 11th, I think.
Yeah.
No? Okay.
Okay, so do you guys have the January 11th open in front of you too?
Do we need to approve each one individually, or?
I don't know, Annalee, I think that if any, hopefully you guys have all had a chance to look at them, if there's anything we should change it now, which is why I was just sort of saying one at a time. And then we can vote to accept them all. Or both of them, because we had already accepted one of them.
Yeah, so we're, what are we discussing now, January 11th?
Yeah, we had been.
Okay. Maybe we just have a motion to approve?
Yep, do we have a motion to approve the minutes from January 11th?
Denise Mason, I make a motion to approve the minutes from January 11th. As stated.
Second?
I'll second, Rachel Blaine, second.
And any discussion? Okay, let's see, alphabetical, Max?
Go ahead.
Rachel?
Yes, I vote yea, Rachel Blaine.
And Mary?
And Mary Cludier, yes.
Denise. Denise Mason, yes.
Kathy?
Kathy needs to abstain because she.
Okay, and Annalee will vote yes, okay, and then February, February 1st? A motion to approve?
I move that we approve the January, February, what is it, February 2nd, February, whatever. Yep, minute meetings.
And a second?
A second up.
Thanks. Discussion, any discussion on those?
I accidentally closed my dock, who moved and who seconded?
I moved, Denise seconded.
Denise and seconded.
And no discussion, is that correct, no discussion? Okay. We'll do alphabetical first names, Ann Mary?
And Mary Cludier, yes.
Denise?
Denise Mason, yes.
Kathy?
No, she's abstaining.
Same, Max?
Max Antis, yes.
Rachel?
Rachel Blaine, yes.
And Annalee, yes, okay, we've got that taken care of. All right. Okay, so. Um, old business, very old, like Chris, we're reviewing for potential bylaws. As I understand it, our process tonight, in each bylaw category, there'll be a screen share of the, of the potential bylaws with the presenter giving an introduction, then we can have some discussion. And if there are some edits that it seems that there's consensus about, we can type them into the, into the screen share and end of that vote on.
I'm sorry, somebody needs to be muted and I'm not sure who it is because I can't tell, so I'm going to mute everybody that's not talking.
Thank you Jen. We'll vote on bringing the proposed bylaws to a public hearing, at which point then there will be a public hearing, potentially after that, there may be some additional edits, and then we would vote to have it go to town meeting. So bottom line, kind of what we decide tonight isn't necessarily the last word on the bylaws. Chris, I got the process correct there?
We're going to unmute.
That sounds great.
Okay, let's pass it over to Chris.
Okay, so I've been working on three bylaws with, with you all, I think I'd like to take the solar bylaw first, and then the site plan review, and lastly, the accessory apartment bylaw, if that's okay with you. And I'm going to attempt to share my screen here, let's see if that will work. Can you see this?
No.
Okay. Well.
There goes that. Jen, are you allowing the screen share, there we go. Cool.
Okay.
Yeah, we can see it now.
Okay, I guess it just took a while. All right, so the solar bylaw, we have discussed a little bit already and we've made some changes to it. We got a lot of comments from the energy committee in between the last meeting and this one, and I have reflected those as well in this version of the bylaws. So what you see in the dark black italic font is the changes from our original discussion and in the red italic font is, are the changes that came from the comments from the energy committee, which were, I think, very helpful and helped to clarify some issues. So I'll just kind of take you through these changes. We talked a little bit about passive solar energy systems in the, and there, that's a definition, a term that's defined in the definition section, and the energy committee suggested we also define active solar energy system. So I've added that definition under 3820 here. And then there was a comment from the energy committee that in addition to regulating the solar arrays and the conversion electronics, that we should also make sure that we are regulating the energy storage components for these systems. So in the definitions for large scale and medium scale systems, we've added, actually for all three sizes, we've added the term or energy storage components to the definition. So that might include things like large batteries or other storage components. I just want to make sure, are you all seeing this as I scroll down?
Yes, yes.
Okay, good. We talked a little bit the last time about the issue of impacts to forest land and farmland. The energy committee suggested that we use the term forest land and farmland in active production, and we want to try to minimize the impacts of these solar systems on, on that specific type of forest land and farmland. Please feel free to interrupt me if you have comments on any of these.
I'm not seeing the red on this, am I just not seeing the red? Is that the most recent version up there?
In 3837, site location of solar.
Hold on a second, I'm not sure, we're, we're not, I don't see what you're seeing and when I was scrolling through, I didn't have the right one, I've got to look, this one is from back too long ago.
Yeah.
I don't find the right one, I'm not seeing it.
Okay.
I don't think you have the red line version.
Oh, 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 okay, wait, 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 you know what, it's, so he has it. No.
Oh, the red one.
Here, 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 okay, I can do it now. I can do it now. Yeah, does everybody have it though? This is what we've seen before. And now I'm feeling like, yes, 225 is the edits, right?
Correct.
That's right.
Let me go back and share the rate document, and then I can be your person there. Sorry, I was sharing the wrong one, okay, so. And now I'm going to mute my.
So just to be clear, I guess I'm not then sharing my document, is that correct?
That's correct.
That's correct, I'm the one sharing. Rachel.
Oh, okay, Rachel, thank you. So if you scroll down. What we're, what we're seeing here.
There we are, or energy storage components, that's what we were looking at before, I've seen that, but I couldn't figure out what. And then we're getting down here to the, it's the 30, where, where was the, where you had just left off with the forest land?
3837.
37. Yep.
Till you hit, well.
You already passed it.
There.
Right there. So you see the red font there? So we talked about having, we wanted to minimize the impacts of solar energy systems on farmland and forest land, and the energy committee suggested using the term inactive production to help sort of define which types of forest land and farmland we were really concerned about. I just, I would suggest just going down to the next red font area. So this one. They wanted, the energy committee's comment was that they wanted to make sure that the issue of insurance covered not just the loss or failure of the system, but also any losses that happened during construction. So we added that term construction here.
Let me also clarify, I spoke with two people on the energy committee, it wasn't necessarily the whole committee that made these recommendations.
Right, good point. Okay, if you keep scrolling.
Is this, this permitted, the, this is a H, utility notification.
Yeah, I'm just trying to figure out how to. Okay, that's better, I couldn't quite read it. So that, the change here was that they wanted us to, whoa.
Sorry. Flute. Sorry, 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 I was trying to make it bigger. There we go.
Almost.
All right, I'm not, I'm not seeing it yet.
I was doing so well.
There we go. Okay. So this was, in terms of notifying the utility, what they wanted us to notify the utility was that, that the, the that there has been notification that the, the utility company has permitted the energy system, not just, I can't remember what the original language was there to be honest, but that was the, the key point, was that the permit had been given by the utility company.
There's more.
Yeah, that's the same issue that I discussed before, it just appears in two different sections of the bylaw.
Hey, Chris?
Yeah.
This is Denise, I had a question, did we just pass, I think, the abandonment part?
We're just coming up to that now, and that's where the, the most significant change is, it's a little further down.
Oh, but I just, I just wanted to. I'm sorry, before you go down, I just wanted to point out, if you go back up to the top, to the abandonment, the beginning, that's the only place you've got, at the end of the sentence, you've got site plan review authority, but every, but every other place you put planning boards, I wasn't sure whether you needed to change that?
That is a good catch Denise, that should, that should be planned board there, so we'll.
The gold stores for that. Thanks.
Yeah, thank you. So this, I'm just trying to make a note here, so I don't lose that.
Chris, I did have one other question on that, the abandonment part. And I'm not sure, you know, whether I misunderstood, whether I just didn't understand the whole thing. I looked at enforcement and I thought, well, how will we know? I mean, do they have to then get in touch with us every year, we're just going to find out if they've abandoned it for a year? How would we know that?
I think we, we talked about that in. Just trying to find the second here.
Okay, I may have missed that.
Says the owner shall notify the planning board, under 38952, the owner shall notify the planning board if applicable by certified mail of the proposed date for discontinued operations or plans for removal. There's also a section. That talks about what happens if they don't notify you, just trying to find it here.
Okay, yeah, I was just concerned about enforcement, it's like, how do we enforce that? And is there any penalty?
So under 38953. The decommissioning section, if we can just scroll down a little bit to that. The language there says that if the, if the owner fails to remove the installation in accordance with these regulations, within 150 days of discontinued operations or abandonment, the town may enter the property and physically remove the installation at the owner's expense, drawing from the escrow account or upon the bond or other financial surety provided by the applicant. So that, I think, is the section that addresses your concern. Your concern. And then just below that, we've added some further details about the issue of financial surety, which are in the red font here. I'm trying to figure out how to get my screen to. Show the entire document. But, you know, rather than reading through that entire thing, maybe folks can kind of read it, read through it. And see whether or not you feel comfortable with the terminology and the language here. There's a process for estimating the costs. Of removal and. A specification of how much of a deposit needs to be put down and that it's held by the town treasurer. So this is again, we're trying to address some comments from the Energy Committee that there needed to be more elaboration of of this section. Does that make sense? Rachel, are you? Are you commenting?
No.
Oh, I thought I I thought I saw your lips moving and I wasn't sure if you knew you were muted.
I am. Well, here we go. Sorry. We when we did Lakeside, was it called Lakeside? Anyway, the the firm from Chicago that developed the the. Quarry, that large scale quarry. Development that we had. This is very familiar. So that and that's, I think, worked out. I don't know if Bob's still on, but. That's worked out pretty well. With escrow account. So this is good. I mean, what I'm saying is this kind of mirrors what we did with that very that large.
Yeah, the quarry is a very kind of similar situation that you want to be able to recover the landscape after the use has completed its, you know, useful life.
So.
So that's if it if it mirrors it, that that's what we want.
Yeah, exactly. It feels it feels like what we what we were able to do there.
Okay. So this was kind of the more most significant change. And I think it's also the. The last significant one. There's. There's a second set of definitions in the bylaw. And the Energy Committee asked a question about why there there's two sets of the same definitions. And and the reason for that is that. We have definitions that stay within the bylaw in that section that. And then the the way the town has has chosen to. To set up its zoning, there's also a separate definition section that generally keep all of the definitions in in one spot. And I think that's actually not a bad idea, because, you know, if someone's searching for definitions, it can be difficult to find them. Might not be a really a bad thing to have it in two different places.
I have a question.
I have a question, actually, if you don't mind me interrupting. Could could you guys discuss that solar access with me since I'm on here? That if you scroll back up.
Which number?
Just scroll back up a little bit.
There we go.
Here. This three, eight, four, two.
Yes, well, my screen doesn't act seem to be as fast as yours, but.
Sorry.
When we get into these setbacks and the solar access just above, I'm still seeing other other admin amendments. Yeah, that this whole section, this is the one I'm going to have the most. I'm going to have the most trouble with this.
Is that Bob speaking?
Yes.
Okay, great. So I I know that you mentioned that you were concerned about enforcement. So we replaced the solar setback section that originally had a fairly convoluted way of of trying to make sure that there wasn't going to be shadows cast. From a property that eliminated the solar access from a neighboring property. And you wanted, I think, something that was enforceable and didn't require a lot of complex calculations. So what I tried to do was was find an example where there we could actually. Put a table in and the table, if you kind of scroll down just a small bit, you can see this. The minimum required solar access setback under this bylaw is now directly related to the height of the the building. So if you have a twenty foot tall building. And it's in a residential and it's a residential use, the required solar setback is is thirty-one feet. If it's a if it's a commercial use in the commercial area, it's nine feet.
So just to be just to be clear here, you can't build. A two story house. Ten feet from your property line, which is currently our setback. Because it may.
On the on the. Northernmost edge of that property. So it would only really affect the the northern property line, which you can kind of see in on the. Letter C just above the table. It says the table illustrates the minimum required solar setback from the northern property line. For structures based on their height to meet the shadow requirements. So we're trying to trying to prevent the situation where you've got two houses that, you know, both want to have solar panels and and one is casting a shadow on the neighboring properties solar panels, so they don't function any longer. We want to, you know, try to prevent that from happening. And it's it's really for new development that this comes into play.
I'm just thinking, if you got a, say, a hundred foot wide lot. How do you? Place a house on it with a fifty foot setback?
So you're thinking about, yeah, the the twenty-eight foot tall building with a forty-nine foot setback.
It's not hard to hit thirty foot with like a two foot with a two story colonial. I mean, and that, you know, normal house.
Right. So I guess. We'd almost have to play out some examples of this. But again, because we're not talking about all four property lines, the the idea behind this would be that you would shift the location of the home. To the section of the property where you you would not be casting that same kind of a shadow.
Yeah, I'm just going with the worst case scenario where the whole entire lot becomes unbuildable because you can't fit the house on it.
Right.
What do we do in that situation?
If if you shift, Rachel, if you could scroll down to D below the table. That's where we addressed that issue, Bob. And it says here that the provisions of this section shall not cause. Any building, any buildable building lot to be rendered unbuildable. However, the provisions in this section shall mean that the site of a structure on a lot and the design and the height of the structure shall be modified to the extent feasible to prevent the loss. Of solar access on an adjacent property.
Okay, I get that, but. So you're. I don't know. It's just really difficult. So you like, if we modify it to an extent feasible, I mean, that might mean. What? They can't build a two story house. They can only build a one story house?
Well, I I see your point, and maybe we need to be more specific in that particular section of the bylaw.
I mean, I'm not trying to impose my will on. I'm just having a hard time with how I'm going to. Tell somebody that they can't build a two story house on their. Legal building lot in what in our ten foot. Setback requirement, say, the property line is to the north is a ten foot. According to our bylaws, now we have a new setback, like. How who's going to win that argument? Or how, you know?
A max hand raised.
Chris, where where's where's the setback coming from? Who's? Who's concerned? Because we're going to have to change our zoning setbacks for the potential of a solar installation that may or may not happen.
Well, I think this is really oriented towards.
Whose concern is this? Who brought this up? Is this something in the state regs or is this just something he feels important?
It's something that is in the state's. Models, earning regulations. And it is a it's it is a complicated issue. Can you still hear me?
Yes.
Okay, my screen just went blank for some reason. So so I guess we're trying to address the situation where. You know, there's a residential property that wants to have solar panels and their and their and and their entire home is being shaded by the adjacent. A a new a new building that comes in that that it really eliminates their. Their access to the sun for some maybe very expensive solar panels that they just put on their on their roof. That's that's the issue, I guess, that we're we're trying to address here. We want to try to maintain access to the sun for for all properties. And I'm trying to do it in a way that's the least onerous and most readily enforceable way possible. Does that make sense?
It's it's like. It's 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 a big stick for a small problem, I think.
Bob, what would you suggest? To sort of address. Do it in a in a reasonable way.
I think there has to be a. A way out. Like, this is a great idea, but. It just seems really restrictive. Like, how do you not? How do you do that? I mean, how do you tell somebody that they can't build a new barn because it's going to put a shadow on their neighbor's property when they have every right to build a barn? I just don't. I mean, I don't, like I said, I don't want to impose my will. This is my town. I'm not a member of Deerfield and my job's in force. It's really difficult for me to try to wrap my head around how I tell people this. And I and I. And like. You know, this may never come up, but if it does, it'd be a real issue. And also, I know you said the northern border, but I mean, I got to thinking about that. That's also the orientation of the house. If the house is running parallel to the border, it's going to cast a shadow different than if it's running at an angle to the border. It's so complicated.
I have a question. So can I just talk this back out loud for a moment? So. Somebody owns a house and they put solar on top. Somebody buys the lot next door and says, well, I want to put solar on top of my house, but I want to put it where they have their shadow. So where, before we have that problem, saying, hey, don't build a house where the shadow is. I mean, essentially, isn't that what we're saying?
No, what we're saying is that the person next door has solar panels on their house and and then somebody buys a lot next door and they can't build a house. Because it's going to cast a shadow on that house, or you couldn't build an outbuilding such as a barn or a garage or. That might cast a shadow on those solar panels. That's the way I'm.
Okay, now I thank you.
Well, you know, I I hear your concern, Bob, and it makes good sense to me. I think maybe we need some language that is. Oftentimes in zoning, you use language like to the extent feasible. They shall, you know, minimize the. The impacts of shadows on neighboring solar panels and properties.
Yeah, and I think if it wasn't possible to. Do that, then they need a way out, I think. I mean.
Right. So I just want to, we need to maybe rethink this section a little bit and. And maybe make it less restrictive. How do how do you feel about putting the numbers and and the table in the in the bylaw, Bob? Because I was trying to really do that to help.
No, I appreciate you did that because it really showed what I was imagining was, you know, a thirty foot house. I mean, I was a builder for years. An average colonial is going to hit thirty feet, no problem. And that's a. Fifty-four foot setback from the property line. Which is huge. We only require a ten foot setback on the side and rear in a residential area. I mean, you know, once again, it depends how the lot's oriented, but that that's major.
And it is going to diminish the motivation to put a. In in more thickly settled areas to put solar panels if you don't have a little protection against shadow, I guess.
It's just a difficult, like, how how do you regulate access to the sun? I mean, I get what you're trying to do.
It's just like a view. It's the same as a view. You know, if you want the view, you have to buy the property.
It sounds like what we're moving towards is something that is somewhat less. Defined, although sometimes it's nice to have the definitions, but less exact and to the extent feasible. I don't know if that's something that, Chris, you could. Sort of draft some language and have Bob take a look at it and see if that seems to make reasonable sense and then we bring it back.
Yeah. I think that makes.
This is Jen. I'm just wondering, like, if if that could be a case by case where they would look at the property and, like you said, and then it would be up to the planning board to this or whoever to decide. That it's not causing a problem. It's just that it case by case, it's going to be up to Bob to to determine this and. That's going to be very difficult to. Monitor, right, Bob?
Yeah, oh, yeah, very difficult. I mean. That that's a great way of looking at it. Like, maybe there's. An appeal of some sort that gets it to a board to have this discussion where.
Yeah.
And maybe not quite so. Restrictive. I mean, I like the part where in the up higher it said, you know, couldn't cast a shadow more than sixteen feet on the other property line, like something like that. It's a little different than setting the house back fifty-four feet.
Yeah, that's.
I don't know. I don't have a good answer. I'm just concerned about it.
Well, and it sounds like there are considerations here, and perhaps we won't be able to wordsmith it right now. Does it make sense to? I mean, I'm not sure that we're going to be able to have exactly said publicly carrying on all four of these and maybe. Or we might have to meet again. In a couple of weeks, just to look at a couple of things. I don't know, but.
So what would be the problem? That Bob's pointing to the 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 sixteen feet. What would be the problem with extending that to residential?
Because that just seems less restrictive. That's like saying, okay, your shadow is not going to. You know, encringe too far onto the neighbor's property. Now, we're not completely making the new lot unbuildable. We're we're kind of trying to be reasonable, more a little more reasonable about it. And I even that, I'm not sure how I judge that, but. It seems less restrictive.
But so and so this part, residential properties, a new residential structure shall not cast a shadow extending more than six feet beyond the property line, of course.
Well, that.
Time of day, whatever.
That's even better, six feet. I'm sorry, I didn't read that one because I didn't really get a chance to go over this, but that kind of contradicts the setback like. I I just don't know how you judge it. Like, so if the thirty foot house is. I don't, Chris, how did you come up with that table, I guess?
Or would it make sense to just remove the table and section C then?
Yeah, that's what I'm thinking. Maybe the the table should come out. The table, just to answer Bob's question, came from a community in Oregon that actually went through the process of calculating. How much of a of a shadow would be cast by each type of of a building?
And that was probably done on the on the solstice, right? Or because that was the original language.
Exactly.
So that's the whole thing, too, is the time of year. And and then how is like if somebody brings a building permit and it is the darkest time of the year? Are you just saying that? Like, how do you even judge that? Like, does it?
Well, that's why I put the table in.
Then it's just so like. Then it's just been so, like, I don't know. They're going to come up with new technology and we're going to have to change this anyways, so.
Yeah.
How do people feel about removing the table, removing section C and, and keeping it at sixteen feet for commercial and six feet for residential?
Well, I guess that brings us back to the need for the table, though, to Chris's point. Like, then how do you? How do I?
I mean, I appreciate all your feelings and stuff, but if this is based on what we can only assume is someone's scientific measurements, I guess I feel like, here we have some work that people have done using math and then we have some people saying, well, it doesn't feel right. And then we're going to abandon it altogether. I guess, I'm not sure how comfortable I feel with that. Um, you know, there is a whole category of architecture called a spite building that people do create, you know? So, I don't know. I, I guess I'm hesitant to throw out the baby with the bathwater. Um, people do pay a lot of money for their solar arrays. Um, and I don't, I mean, if it happened to me, I would have the opposite feeling, you know?
I mean, what if you bought the lot next to the person who bought the solar panels and now you can't build on it? It's the same argument. I mean, I don't, I'm going to get out, I'm going to stop because I'm, I'm just having trouble with enforcing. Um, that's all. I don't want to.
Trouble with enforcing anything, don't we? I mean, I don't.
I don't know. I mean, I was.
He's the code enforcement officer, so he's the one that has to either issue a building permit or not issue a building permit. So, I mean, what he says and how he's going to enforce it actually has a huge play in this.
I, I, I understand that, but my, my, I mean, isn't it like if you've already purchased something, like for, to have the second person come along and be like, well, I want to be able to build whatever I want, despite the fact that you have solar panels, doesn't strike me as the right thing to do either, you know? So.
I don't, I don't think it's build whatever you want. It's building whatever is legal.
No, I understand that. I'm not saying whatever you want, but I'm saying that having no consideration for your neighbors, you know, equipment, maybe isn't the thing that we want to encourage either.
All right, I'm not trying to argue with it. I'm just.
Oh, I'm not either. I'm just trying to understand it. Like, what's the best way to go about this? We have something that has been, um, collect, data that's been collected. And I'm just saying that, you know, just to throw that out, I don't know. I think that there's some value to it.
There may be some value, but you also have to think like anti-development, anti-community, anti-neighborhood, you know? So, you know, looking at all of that and seeing how the town is going to enforce it and do building permits, invite people, because people are going to be like, well, we have to look at all of these different areas in order, you know, we have to look at the conservation commission. We have to now look at the zoning bylaw. We have to look at the solar bylaw now.
Well, then I think that, you know, maybe going back to what was being said before about coming and talking to us, because I think Max is right. Like, this may be like, you know, never or once or not that big a deal. And I feel like for, you know, how often we might encounter this, maybe it's just easier. We probably.
It'll be a review. I mean, I'd have to review this on every single building application for every garage building that comes across my desk.
Every single one, if this is in there?
Because there's a solar array next door.
No, this says solar access. They could potentially put the solar array on later. I mean, then what? Then, you know, then they can't build a garage or a barn or something. I don't know. I mean, I'm just.
It just opens up a can of worms when we're, I mean, the number of permits and the type of permits that Bob sees, commercial and residential and, you know, agricultural, it's just, it makes it a diff- difficult thing to manage. So we have a couple hands up. Um, Annalee, do you want to hear from?
Tim?
Um, hi, Tim Hilchi. I'm the chair of the Conservation Commission. Not that that has anything to do with solar panels, but sometimes it does. Several things. One is when you get a solar installation, solar people come and they use a tool that says, in a twelve-month period, this is the range of energy you're going to get, and this is where the sun's going to be, and this is how much insulation is going to fall onto these solar panels. So this is very variable with the seasons. The other thing I'd want to point out is if you have two colonials of the same size and they have a roof-mounted solar panel on one of them, what you're really worried about is when the sun is low, is it going to cast a si- shadow on your solar panels, low in the sky? In the middle of the summer, it's going to have an entirely different profile. So I think there is a possibility that people are overestimating. And, you know, there should be some way to accommodate somebody who's put solar panels on their house when there's an empty lot next door. This happens in cities, it happens in towns. And if you adopt this bylaw, then it's the law. And then you have to deal with it. It's just like when the electrical code changes. You know, you have to put in these fault-resistant circuit breakers in your panel when, for many, many years, you never had to. And I've heard builders tell me that this has add, adds five or ten thousand dollars to the cost of building a house. But it's now law, so you need to enforce it as the building contractor. So I do think that there's a way to make this work. And maybe you just need to spend a little more time and maybe bring a solar installer in to talk to people. So you can.
You had a great point about two houses the same heights. So say you got two colonials the same height with roof mounts. Now their shadow has now moved up thirty feet in the air.
Yeah, but the, the solar panels, exactly, you know.
Right, so that shadow's completely irrelevant now.
Yeah, it'll hit, it'll hit the windows, but it won't hit the solar panels.
Right.
So it really does, you can still have a buildable lot. It may, you might have to change the design of the house you want to build. But that might mean, hey, I'm not going to buy this piece of land. I'm going to buy another piece of land where I can build this thirty-five-foot colonial that I want to build. And somebody else comes in and buys and builds a ranch and it doesn't have a problem. So it doesn't make the lot unbuildable. It just means that somebody has to rethink the design of their house or rethink whether they want to buy that lot instead of another lot.
I'd like to hear Nick next, and then maybe if we could take a step back and decide how we're going to continue with this, because I think it's a valuable discussion, but we have three other sets of bylaws and we just need to figure out how we're going forward. Thanks, Tim. Nick?
Yeah, I just, um, basically it was the whole discussion of, I can't remember what word she used, but like the, um, building something kind of in spite of your neighbor kind of deal. The way this is set up would also kind of have the same effect if I was an existing homeowner and the lot next door was vacant, where I could just say, you know what, I'm going to put my solar panels as far to my southern border as possible. So then that way, no one can build in that lot next to me because they're going to be casting their shadow and now they have to step back fifty feet because I decided to be the spiteful neighbor, because I wanted to keep a vacant lot next to me and I put my solar panels as far south as possible. So that was just the opposite side of the coin, where rather than building a building to block a neighbor's solar panels in spite, me be, me being spiteful and putting solar panels as far away as I could so that no one could build there.
Well, just to be, just to address that comment, that the bylaw doesn't, it, it doesn't matter where the solar panels are on, on the lot. So that, that issue would not be relevant, um, based on the way.
It, it would be relevant in the fact that if I built them in a reasonable location, maybe my solar panel placement wouldn't have even affected the lot next door. Whether they built ten feet away from the border or not, they wouldn't have casted a shadow on me because I put my solar panels, you know, further north on my property because it fit my house better. But you know what? I just don't want the neighbor to build on that property, so I'm going to put them as close to that border as possible. And you know what? I'll go ground mounted. So then that way they totally would be affected, even if they put a fence up.
I think this is a good example of there, of how complex the issue is. I'm wondering.
Yeah.
Since this seems to be the only section of the solar bylaws that I believe that we're having some concerns about. I'm wondering if Chris and Bob and whomever else they might feel, might be sort of able to add, add some expert opinion to this, might be able to address this and then come back at our next meeting with, um, really just looking at this one section. Does that seem reasonable, planning board?
Yeah, this is Denise. That, that makes sense to me, I think, because we're going to go round and round in circles, I think, you know, not coming to any conclusion tonight.
I, I agree. I think that this is a, a good point to iron out. Lori Busada has her hand raised. I don't know if that's just, is she on the Energy Commission?
Lori?
I just wanted to clarify Nick's thoughts there. And Chris, you can tell me if I'm wrong, but I believe the, the purpose of the bylaw is that the house would not cast a shadow on the lot. It doesn't say it wouldn't cast a shadow on somebody else's solar panels. So if you choose to put your solar panels close to your lot line, then you're really taking a chance. You can't prevent what somebody else does. Is that correct?
That's a good clarification, Lori. That's what, what I was trying to say earlier, but you said it much better.
Okay.
All right, let's just decide if, if Chris and Bob, does it make sense for the two of you to sort of try to parse this out with some help and bring it back to our next discussion? We were not quite under the gun yet, but we're close for getting a meeting and whatnot. Okay, good. All right, moving forward.
Do we need to vote to continue this? It's an open here, it's an open, isn't it?
No, it's not a public hearing yet. This was just our discussion. We haven't voted to bring it to public hearing. That has to happen, right?
Right.
Okay, thank you. Um, it's now eight o'clock. We kind of, uh, might turn into pumpkins in an hour, so let's see what we can do with, uh, Chris, your choice is site plan review next?
Yes. Rachel, would you be able to share that bylaw on your screen? The site plan review amendments are suggested amendments to the existing site plan review standards that add a section that's called green development performance standards to the, the site plan review. And the planning board spent an extensive amount of time going through these about a year ago, and I realized that many of you were not around for that discussion. So I think this is a bylaw that I'm going to probably need to ask what questions folks have about it based on your reading of it, but I'll try to do a kind of a, an over, overview of, of what it does. So the idea of, of the green development performance standards is to try to limit the, the impacts of development to sites that might result in the, in the removal of, for example, all of the trees on a piece of property or the, the, the grading of a property to eliminate all of the, you know, the existing contours in, in the land. Or, uh, might have significant impacts on stormwater or similar types of things. So we're trying to, um, trying to establish some standards that are kind of common sense standards to, to limit site disturbance, to preserve some of the, the most important trees on property. There's also a, a mention of solar access here, but it's, it's more in, in, in the form of the orientation of buildings to try to promote passive solar access. There's some standards for landscaping and water reduction.
Do I have the right one? Just so you know, Chris, can you see it? It's the one, uh, it is one, yeah, January twenty-first. Okay, thank you, sorry.
There are standards for protection and buffering of agricultural land. Uh, some standards for parking and trip reduction, for pedestrian and bicycle access, for storage of hazardous materials, uh, for light pollution reduction, collection of, and storage of recyclables and construction waste management. So, there's a lot of detail in this bylaw. I'm hoping that folks have had a chance to kind of read through it and, and think about it. The last time we talked about it, there was a pretty detailed discussion and, and the, the things that are shown in red in the bylaw again are the most recent amendments that the planning board had made and discussed. But again, it's been, it's been a while since we've, we've had a more detailed discussion about this.
So, Rachel? Rachel, can you stop? On fifty-four fifteen, we were just talking about, uh, construction or expansion of large and medium-scale ground-mounted solar installation. Would that be the case? I mean, would it, we'd be looking at large or medium, or we're just looking at large here, Chris?
Well, I'm glad you actually raised that because the, the changes to the solar bylaw, um, changed these terms that are in the site plan review. And, uh, so we want to make sure we, we correct that. Uh, but we would be talking about the large and the medium scale under site plan review.
Okay, great. Um, under definitions, does anyone have any questions with those? I am wondering in fifty-four forty, under procedures, if anyone doesn't have anything until then. Um, I know that there has been some question in relation to other issues as to whether or not proposals should come before planning board, first zoning board, first simultaneous. Is this an area where we could clarify that a little bit under the procedures section? Or is that not? What?
Well, just to be clear, the, the proposed changes, um, that we're making are, again, in the bold font, all of the, the, the font that you're looking at, that's not bold is, is your existing bylaw. So we, we're not proposing any changes to the procedure section at this point, but you, you certainly could do that since we're going through the site plan review bylaw. And if you want to fix other issues at the same time, this would be a good time to do it. It's just not part of what we were working on originally.
Seems like it's an issue that's come up maybe since a year ago. I don't know how the rest of the committee feels about it. The board feels about it and also whether or not that would be something that Adam Costa would weigh in on.
Is there specific language in the procedure section, Annalee, that you're, you're thinking about?
I just wasn't sure if the procedure section was the place for it. I just know that there has been question as to whether or not something should come before one board before coming to the other. And it seemed like procedures, I don't know. It seemed like if we're talking about site plan review, that someplace in there we would want to address, we could potentially address that. Rachel and Mary?
I, I have some thoughts. I mean, one of the, one of the features of this is that we've often met with another group. It's always been just more about board cooperation or, or, um, administrative suggestion. You know, we didn't, we've never had anything in the bylaw that particularly orders, go here first, then here, then here, then here. And you can see it right here. Prior to the commencement, the project gets site plan review approval from the planning board. I mean, that, that's what the planning board want. It's kind of like, you, you ask the surgeon, the surgeon says, cut. And the physical therapist says, exercise. I mean, I think this is where we haven't really addressed this, other than episodically, when it's kind of worked out to say, oh, we should meet at the same time as the ZBA or the CONCOM.
If you scroll down a little further in the procedures section, there's a line that says, uh, no building permit shall be issued by the building inspector and/or no special permit or variance shall be issued by the Board of Appeals without the written approval of the site planned by the planning board.
Okay, so it addresses it. It's just whether or not we follow that.
And I'm sorry to interrupt. I can't figure out where the razy hand thingy is. I don't mean to be an interrupter, sorry. So as of late, there was an issue about, you know, you have, um, you know, sixty days to get. So as of late, there was an issue about, you know, you have um, you know, 60 days to get a site plan review. And as I was reading through this, I didn't see any 60-day vocabulary. But that might have been in a draft before I came along. So um, Chris, I'm wondering if that's striking any bells with you?
Well, if you look at the middle of the screen that's showing right now, it references the 60 days. The planning board review and act upon the site plan with such conditions as deemed appropriate within 60 days of its receipt and notify the applicant of its decision.
So Adam Costa was saying that a lot of um, you know, communities don't have any timing issue or language like that. And I was wondering, uh, you know, if I could ask the other board members what they thought of that and if they think that that's, you know, helped us out, or maybe we should reconsider that while we're considering everything else. Because I would say get rid of it. If other communities don't have it, um, and we can eliminate one more little hurdle for ourselves, you know, bureaucratically, um, I think that we should get rid of that. That's long and short of what I'm saying.
Max has his hand raised.
Max?
I raised my hand back when we were talking about uh procedural, you know, which board you went in front of. And the thing was that we ran into the situation where somebody brings a building that doesn't comply with the zoning and needs a ZBA approval, um, but they want us to approve a site plan based on a non-conforming building, which, you know, I have trouble with doing. And then you know, the size of the, you know, the stormwater impacts and things like that. So I it'd be good to have someone get their uh their variance prior to, you know, getting a site plan. Is, you know, a site plan issued.
So actually, what you're saying, Max, is that potentially the ZBA should go before the planning board?
Yes, because to me, you know, if a a building doesn't comply, then how can you approve it? You know, and if they're not going to get an approval, you're just encouraging them to, you know, come up with something that doesn't comply because they know that they can say to the ZBA, well, the planning board approved this. So what? You know, you're you're kind of, kind of like the 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 going back and forth between two authority figures, you know? Well, they said this is okay, you know, and.
Well, Max, I think I think you raise a a good point, and you're raising kind of a bigger issue here. My my response to to that, the overall issue is that the special permit and the site plan re- review uh procedure should be combined and should be handled by the planning board rather than the ZBA. I think that makes it a much cleaner process. And it it eliminates some of that, some of that conflict, at least. But that's, you know, that's a bigger, that's a much bigger fish than we're frying right now, I guess. And it may be a discussion that the board needs to have with the ZBA. But oftentimes, it's it's a special permit with site plan review process that communities have established. And the planning board issues both of those in a simultaneous kind of way.
Tim and Tolly, if you're addressing this particular issue? Tim?
Um, yes, um, I just wanted to suggest that um, one thing that's been a problem in looking at what's highlighted on the screen, the language looks to say that the planning board needs to make a decision within 60 days. Or, and you may need more than 60 days to review all the questions that are raised. So um, the second part where it refers to 60 days is a typical planning bylaw that requires you to start taking action within 60 days. I think this this thing that's highlighted right now is dangerous, and you should think about it.
Thank you, Tim. Tolly?
Hi, Tolly Stark, Keats Road. I just wanted to bring to your attention um section 5421 of our zoning bylaw that does state about having a site plan before applying for a specific zoning relief such as variance or special permit. And the reason why that's there is because it's very hard for a board to um, you know, be able to really identify whether zoning relief, considering it's a a very discretionary thing, is appropriate when there's not a site plan or they don't have the information to act on and or know what they're voting to give relief to when they don't have an approved site plan, which is why it's actually part of our zoning bylaw that says you need to have that for certain zoning relief. So I think it makes sense um that the planning board would have reviewed everything before it would go to the zoning board of appeals. And having that in procedure, I think, would um help the town avoid a lot of missteps that could occur um in these processes. So, thank you.
Well, it seems like um these are some important issues. I understand Chris's comments that, you know, maybe this is bigger than what we initially embarked on a year ago. But in fact, um, we're certainly seeing that is it can be problematic. So I I do think, I mean, the it's been made, mentioned that the ZBA should weigh in. I wonder about Adam Costa, and I also wonder about the select board. I don't know. So I wonder if we can continue looking through, um, but I mean, this yet again might be something we need to return to. Sorry about that, but continue with our review of of the rest of these bylaws here and um or proposed bylaws and see if there's other things we can agree upon or that need to be fleshed out a little bit more. Does that seem reasonable?
Annaly, I'd like to push back just a little bit on this one point about this 60 days. I think this this really is important to come back to and not to get lost in the shuffle. I think that this is a fulcrum for a lot of uh important decisions that might come down the pike. And I think that 60 days is not enough. And if Adam Costa says we don't even need to have a time limit, then I would prefer not to have a time limit.
Other how? Yeah, it sounds reasonable to me, um, Denise.
Yeah, um, I completely agree with Anne Mary on that. I think that's, and and Tim said the same. I think it's just, it's complicating matters. It's, I think it's just tying our hands. And I also concur with what Tolly said, too. I mean, I don't understand how something could go to the ZBA before we have not approved a site plan review. So, you know, as long as we're doing this, I'd just like to do a thorough job and not breeze through it. Because I think there are two really big issues, and I think if we spend a little bit more more time on it, we won't have as many issues in the future.
Nick will come to you for a minute. Um, I don't know if um, Kathy, Rachel, Max, you have any different opinions on that? It sounds like we're talking.
I have a, not a different, but I do think that, and I I would cite our recent work with the Whitney Hill, that, yeah, Whitney Hill um project that um it is important that the planning board feel a certain heat behind each of these projects. Um, and I know that's, you know, that's part of the designation of a 60 days to move on it. Just, just to this, to speak to the other side and not to have things happen precipitate, you know, without due process, but to maybe some sort of, I I think I heard this earlier, that there was some hmm action taken within a certain amount of time, so that not only did the planning board feel some heat to move the project along, but the applicants themselves felt some some um urgency to address issues. I don't disagree um with the kind of what I see as perhaps tying hands uh with a 60-day deadline. And we've we've worked within that before, um, without, we have great administrative staff right now. But when we had, you know, a dearth of administrative staff, we were sometimes really scrambling to address things that came to us and hadn't been brought forward. So that's, I'm kind of speaking out of both sides of my mouth, but I do think that just attending to somehow the the hmm moving, keeping things moving, that's all.
Well, but create language that keeps it moving but doesn't create a loophole at the same time, right?
That's worth our hand in any kind of direction.
Yep, 90 days. Nick?
Yeah, so I just wanted to kind of tie into the 60-day thing, like, maybe it just needs to be clearer that as long as you guys see the issue, if it's continued, you have until the end of time. Like, just a clarification that, like, in in the DG case, they asked you guys to continue until a a specific time. So that would automatically extend your 60 days. But I also like, I believe it was Chris that mentioned it, um, how about we just re uh reassign the um these um, oh gosh, variances and stuff back to you guys rather than the zoning board, since they really should have a site plan from you, and you can't approve a site plan if they don't have these variances that allow their site plan to be legal. So you guys should have the full authority on whether their site plan is good and if it needs variances, that you guys are making that decision. You guys are an elected board, and you would have the town's best interests at heart because you're put into your positions by a vote of the town rather than appointed by a couple people. So that was all I had to say.
Oh, boy. All right, Tim. Thank you, Nick.
Yes, just one final thing. I believe that the language in this section addresses, and and I just want to reiterate, I wasn't suggesting that you shouldn't have some time by when you need to start acting. I was, because the second part of the 60, 60-day period is if the planning board does nothing for 60 days, then it's a tacit approval. So it puts pressure on the planning board to get off and do something. But if you only give them 60 days in which to do something, what happens? If they wait 30 days, does that mean they only have 30 days left to act? So the blue stuff really is dangerous, and it needs to probably go out of this. Whereas the the other part, that's the other 60-day reference here, two sentences down, just says you need to start acting within two months of getting an application. And that seems entirely um enough pressure. The the Conservation Commission has 21 days to act on stuff, which is entirely not enough. It's insufficient, um, because uh we meet once a month. So if somebody puts something in on the first and we meet on the 25th, tacit approval. So that's just one thing I wanted to make sure everybody was.
That is.
Planning board, how do you want to proceed with this? I mean, there certainly are some very meaty things that we're talking about here. With potential ZBA impact, legal impact. And also uh wanting to be comprehensive and do a good job as we're addressing these now. How do you want to proceed? I mean, I don't know that.
I'm always pushing for independence from the ZBA. We spend a lot of time, we spend a lot of energy, we spend a lot of time on these meetings um going over this language. And I think that we should, you know, this board, the planning board, should be the ones who retain. I I I don't know. I I don't think the ZBA is here doing this work. You know what I mean? So I feel like we're, I'm not sure, I'm never wanting to share power with the ZBA. I don't think that that's a good idea. I think that they should have a very limited role, and we should have this role. But that's just me personally, you know what I mean? And I'm just one member, but that's.
Would that then mean, Anne Mary, what you're talking about, a kind of putting aside the 60-day piece, is that we would um require that site plan review occurs prior to ZBA review?
That's what I think, yes. And I think that, you know, Chris is always taking copious notes. So I think that we've gotten this far in this document, and we should, you know, put a pin in it and, you know, start right here. Like, please, you know, let's not start from the beginning, but I think that we need to, you know, get along to the next.
Okay, yes, Denise?
Yeah, I I I agree with um what Anne Mary said. And, oh, God, what was I going to say? You know, when Rachel brought up Whitney Hill, you know, that that was a little, that was a little tricky because we didn't have all the documents. I mean, I think at first we saw some handwritten plan, and we didn't have all the documents. And that is going to sort of segue into what if we are able to get into the new business tonight, talking about when documents should be received, who should re- review them, how many, you know, how far ahead before a meeting. And I think if we clarify some of that, we'll take care of some of these issues. But I think I think we, this still needs a little more work, and I don't feel comfortable approving anything tonight.
Do you think you have, I mean, um, it sounds like, you know, uh, potentially, we're talking about as, tell me if I'm wrong on this, as I synopsize folks, that we're talking about uh site plan review should occur prior to special permitting by the ZBA and that uh potentially uh we may not, we need to act on it within a certain period of time upon receipt of a of a complete application. We're not so sure about 60 days. I mean, I don't know. Does that, does that sound like the direction we're going for?
Yeah, I think so.
Okay, all right, Chris, you got that kind of?
Yeah, um, I I think I'd like to get um Adam Costa's opinion about the 60-day issue because there is a requirement in the zoning act that you have to act within a certain amount of time. And I'd like to get his his views on that and and maybe bring this back to you um after we hear from him.
Excellent, good. I'll go back up a little bit um just before, uh, Board of Selectmen needs to be the select board. Big deal, right there.
Yeah, I want to just a again reiterate that all the language we're looking at here is in your existing bylaw. This is not the section that we're going to be discussing tonight in terms of what we're proposing to change. Um, and that was um later in the bylaw. I'm I'm hoping that um if we're going to move on from this tonight, that uh maybe the board would consider reviewing the the changed section of the bylaw and and sending me your comments or thoughts, perhaps by email, because um we've had a lot of uh, a lot of times, this has come up on the agenda, and we haven't really gotten to the the meat of the bylaw, unfortunately. And I know we're we're running short on time.
You're talking about us reviewing the red lines?
The the section that is in the dark, italic in the red and the red font are the sections that we were really going to be discussing tonight. And we kind of got sidetracked um looking at this whole um procedural section, which is is not really what we were going to be talking about originally. So Rachel, if you were to to scroll down.
Which number? I'm at 5522.
Fortunately, my screen has frozen, so I can't see where you are.
I'm at 5522.
Well, basically, what um Chris is requesting, I though, is that we look at the bold and the red line.
Section 5520, 5520 is titled green development performance standards. That that is the section that that was on the, you know, really on the agenda for discussion tonight.
Oh, Chris.
And it's, it is something that's important that that we try to get to some level of closure on, in part because it's tied to the town's uh MVP grant. We we're actually doing some of this work under state funding to revise the bylaw. And there's a time, there's a timeframe uh for that. We're we're hoping to get that that work all done and ready for town meeting by by May. So that's why I'm asking if if folks could perhaps take a look at that section 5520 and then um send me your your. and then send me your your thoughts and comments about that or questions.
We'll try to send them to you within the next week.
That that would be really helpful, yeah.
What do we, Board, what do we do about the fact that it seems like there are other pieces of this bylaw that are not the ones that we previously looked at, but in fact do seem problematic? What do we want to do about that? Rachel, back and forth with you. Can't hear you, Rachel. We can't hear you.
Muted. I do think that we this issue of who goes first and how we work together, this has dogged us all along. I think Anne Mary has makes a very forceful point about how we proceed, who gets to make that decision. We're not making it. The town would make it anyway. So but we would be proposing it. I think the the point of an elected board is one thing. The other feature is that we re we meet regularly. Whereas the ZBA meets when they have projects before them. They don't have to meet as regularly. So that was always a feature that, you know, just even if you were just kind of relying on good neighborly cooperation and that who what night we met on and, you know, when it fit in. I think a little more regularization more would be really helpful if we're if we're there. I mean, if we're at that point and nothing dramatic. And I do think the sixty days is something to look at and I appreciate that. Chris would talk to Adam about that because I can't imagine there's not something that protects the business owner as well involved with the state regs.
Well, then maybe what we're talking about potentially is at within the next week as we send comments to Chris, if people can go through the whole site plan review section, certainly not with a fine-toothed comb like me for select board versus Board of Selectmen. But if there are major, you know, really major issues that we could bring those forward for discussion next and and include that on your comments, even though, I mean, we just be consolidated to send them to Chris. That sound okay? Okay, good. Thank you. All right, we have two more. Can we move along then? We have two more potential bylaws, the ADUs and the formula-based business. I do wonder with the, Chris, we've put you off on so many things, but if we might be able to address the formula-based business, which might then mean we need to do the ADUs accessory apartments at our next meeting or depending on how quickly or how well we get through formula-based business. How does that sound to to people? We certainly have a lot of public who are interested in the formula-based business that are online right now. Can we go forward with that?
Fine to me.
Okay, great. All right. So formula-based business. And I think so, Chris, thank you very much for your patience and your work on this. And we're just, we have a always have a warm seat for you here. Formula-based business, Debbie.
Yes, Debbie Schreiber, Become Tuck Drive. We're back again. This is now, this is a continuation of the public hearing, is that?
Oh, yes, I need to reopen that. We are reopening the public hearing. We will have discussion. And if it feels like we're at the end of discussion, then we can move and second to close the public hearing. And then the planning board would vote on a on bringing the proposed bylaws to town meeting. Is that, I think?
Yes, that's and that was my, that was our hope is it would be that 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 the planning board would be vote to be proponents of this bylaw at town meeting and for it to go on to the warrant. So we, this is a continuation of the hearing. We've gone over elements of the proposed bylaws and tried to make changes that were responsive to what the the planning boards and other members of the public's comments about it. So I would be helped a little bit by knowing what would be most helpful for for you folks in as much as we've spent some spent some time on this topic. What is what would be most useful?
Um, well, I think at the last meeting, there was a request that to sort of understand what's the goal of all this. And you very nicely, you know, sent us something that would basically be an explanation. It wouldn't be part of the bylaws, as I understand.
That's correct. And I we sent that out earlier today in response to that request by the by the board, but that would not be a part of the bylaws. So it seems like rather than adding in in an element that isn't directly related, it'd be better to set that aside. But and that is because these are amendments to the existing bylaws. Therefore, we're we're not proposing new bylaws. These are amendments, and that's very important to understand. Amendments to the zoning bylaw one seventy-nine and and some of its elements, including the table of uses, among others. What what would be the be the most helpful for you folks?
Board, I mean, I don't think you really, otherwise you haven't made any changes since the last time we just.
No, that we were not asked to make any changes from the the version that you have is dated January twenty-third of this year. That is the one we spoke about at the last meeting, went over the the changes that that represented in which we had tried made some additions to the definitions. And we had we had focused on an applicant having to conform, alter definitional elements four, five and six, which are exterior elements of their proposed buildings, the facade, the standardized decor and color scheme of the building and standardized signage in order to potentially develop in the C-one and C-two districts in Deerfield. Exempt from this is the seat, the most northerly C-two district on which there would be no restrictions, none of these restrictions on formula-based businesses.
So we could have some additional discussion with the planning board as well as members of the community. It's a little bit hard when we've had months between some of our different discussions. I will say that as I've been talking with a few people in the last month, one comment that was made today is that zoning is a snapshot of what the town will look like, I think is really interesting. And if we zone for development, then that's what we'll get. And if we zone differently, then, you know, we 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 can't be we can't be crying in our beer, if you say, with when we make certain zoning requirements and then people come and follow our zoning, so.
I love the crying in the beer. I think that's what it is. Do you, does anyone want to see Annalee crying in her beer? Do you, do you have these, Kathy? You do? Okay.
Kathy's muted.
I think she's saying, yes, she has them.
Yeah, yes, I do.
Okay. Yeah.
Kathy, it might be interesting, considering that we'll be bringing this to, well, we may be bringing this to town meeting and wanting, there's, there has been a tension between, is it pro-business, pro-town? Is it providing good guidelines that will help businesses comply with our our desires versus is it something that will send businesses along their way? And I don't know what sort of a impression you had when you reviewed them.
Well, I think it a lot depends on what the business is and where it wants to go, who's abutting that area of the business and what impact it has in that particular area that it's being built. What is the nature of our town? What is our demographic? What do we, what are we looking for to sustain our revenue? But also stay in line with sort of the needs of our people. And, you know, that's subject to each individual business that petitions to come into South Deerfield or Deerfield in general. That that becomes a base by base. I mean, one person's going to say, great, and another one's going to say this doesn't align. So I I I think that becomes a an individual basis.
Well, I think that's what we're trying to do here is give a little bit more guidelines to make it a little bit less subjective. Is that correct?
Yes, we're really trying to set out and say, well, what defines a formula-based business? And that's the first section, which is a set of depth would be added to the definitions in the in the zoning bylaws to say these, this is what formula-based business looks like. There are ten or more of them. These are, we're talking retail. We're talking about retail food-based or or formula, excuse me, formula-based food service or formula-based retail and entities and of which there are ten or more existing in the in the nation or in the world. And that if they have any of those six defining elements, that allows the planning board to identify them and say, oh, you are a formula-based business. So please understand this doesn't apply to every business that comes to town. No, we're trying to identify the formula-based businesses. And our goal is to say, we want you to work with us. We're not going to say you can't be here. In fact, you can be in the northernmost C-two district without having to address these issues. But if you're going to be in the C-one or C-two districts in town and you you fulfill any of these definitional elements that that I just mentioned, one through six, then what we want you to do is to be sure that your standardized decor and color scheme on the exterior of the building, your ex your facade and your signage is is going to fit with the rural character of our community. And we on the planning board are the wish to wish to evaluate that. And that's and so that's how it would therefore apply. Am I making sense? Yeah.
Does anyone have any other additional views to address?
Yeah, Annalee, I was just gonna say, I I think these are really well thought out. I think it's they're really thoughtful additions to our current bylaws. And what you said about, I think we're pro-business and we're pro-town. And, you know, that's trying to combine the two together. And I think Deerfield doesn't want to be just any town USA. And there was an article that I got from a friend, of course, I can't say the name, a friend that I had actually posted on Deerfield Now that was just a really wonderful explanation or description of of what I think most mostly everybody in Deerfield wants to see and wants Deerfield to be. And I think that we should really take this seriously. And I think I think the one stumbling block is just making sure that we get that across to the general community that we're not trying to be exclusive. We're trying to be. Exactly. This is saying how a formula-based business can be here. But we're asking them to work with the community in the in a way that helps to maintain the 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 rural character and and works well in as well in that that will also allow Deerfield to have a supportive network of businesses. Now, local businesses, if there are formula-based businesses, we just, we want them to work with us. And and we're we're asking them to adjust those three exterior elements in order to to demonstrate that.
Well, and they may not even need to adjust anything, right? I mean, that's my reading of it. Like, if they come in to have a barn for a logo and they happen to make their, you know, buildings look like barns and well, we have a lot of barns, so, you know, we wouldn't, we're not here to regulate every little piece.
No, it could be that they arrive and they have, they have things that are that work, you know. But what it does do is it it helps to inform the developer about here, here's the rules that we want to abide by that that and we want you to know what they are so that we are on the same page. And worse, I think, is when a developer arrives and really just doesn't quite know what the what the rules are or that they seem to be shifting or they don't seem to apply evenly or equally to similarly situated businesses. And in this case, I'm speaking of formula businesses. So this this is also protective of the town in that sense, protective of the town's interests to have to have clarity about that. And I will mention to reiterate that these that Deerfield in two thousand eight considered at an early stage, a draft similarly, very similar to this one and which was eventually adopted, again, very similar to what this bylaw is, was adopted in other communities in Massachusetts. It kind of fell off of Deerfield's radar radar back in oh-eight. But but what we're actually proposing is our bylaws that are are amendments that are in use in other communities and which have been approved and by the state attorney general. So we know from that standpoint that they have passed muster legally. And this just also, by the way, the these the versions that we're showing you were reviewed by Bob Ritchie, an attorney who formerly worked in the Attorney General's Office reviewing bylaws for their for how well they accorded with state statutes. So it got it got it got a good look over by someone who would know and that was done informally. We through the Aegis of our land use planning consultant, Jeff Lacy, who helped to draft, who drafted these documents for us.
Um, let's see, Max, do you have any questions or thoughts?
No.
All right. Thank you. Anyone else on the board? If not, if it feels that we would be at a point then for taking a motion to close the public hearing and then we would vote on bringing whether or not to bring the proposed bylaws to the town. Could I have a motion to close the public hearing?
I move that we close the public hearing concerning formula-based bylaw changes.
Thank you, Rachel.
Denise Mason, I second that.
Denise, any other discussion? All right.
I have a, so when in, well, yeah, a quick question. So will Denise, will you, I mean, Denise, sorry, I'm looking at Denise, but I'm saying Debbie, will you be the one presenting this or are we presenting this? Aha.
Our our request is that that the planning board be the proponents for this in 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 its placement on the town warrant for for town meeting. We can, you know, discuss who speaks for it, I guess, at town meeting. I don't quite know how that works.
Are you raising your hand to do that, Annalee?
No, I'm saying, you know, side by side with, I'm remembering at last town meeting when John sat there and I think Chris was next to him for some of the meetings and whatnot, so. That would be good.
We'll we'll absolutely assist in whatever way the board would find useful and helpful.
All right. Any further discussion? Okay, let's see, a roll call. Max?
We vote, we're just voting to close the.
Close to close, yes, to close the public hearing, correct. Yes, so Max?
We can close the the public hearing, hearing, yes.
I, thank you. Rachel?
Yes, I, Rachel Blaine.
Anne Mary?
Anne Mary, include your I.
Denise?
Mason, I.
Kathy?
Kathy, we travel by.
And Annalee, I. So it's unanimous that we'll close the public hearing. So now can we have a motion to about about to bring the proposed bylaws to town meeting?
I make a motion to bring the proposed town law, proposed bylaws to town meeting. Denise Mason?
What happened to deliberation?
I think discussion, does discussion come next? Wait, we'll have a move in a second and then discussion. Am I doing it correctly?
No, I thought we had discussion.
Well, the discussion was to close.
To close the hearing.
Now we're discussing whether to bring them forward to town.
Okay, we've closed, I'm just.
No, that's fine. Clarify. No, that's fine. Clarify, please, if it's not clear.
Renew, Max.
Okay, no, I just thought, once we close the public hearing, the board deliberates as to its position.
I think that's true. So we'll move to bring it to town meeting. We'll second that. And then we have discussion. Is that how we'll?
Well, you're kind of letting the cow out of the barn before.
I think we discuss, then we vote. We close the meeting, then we discuss among us, then we vote among us.
Oh, okay, sorry. Were you seconded? I don't think, were you seconded, Denise? I don't know.
I don't, I don't, I don't think so.
Reel that back. All right. Thank you. So let's have some deliberation on these. Deliberation is open.
So I understand why this is brought forward and the purpose and all that. But I just feel it's, you know, I wouldn't mind a CVS, I wouldn't mind a Walgreens, I wouldn't mind a lot of, you know, formula-based businesses in town, but I don't know, it just seems too restrict, you know, it's like we're throwing up a wall. And we're not being business-friendly. That's my feeling. You know, what about Subway? What about Dunkin' Donuts? What about, there's a lot of businesses that are formula-based and want to, you know, they've spent a lot of time and money creating their brand, you know, creating their look, their decor, their architecture. And we're just throwing up a wall to say, okay, but not here. You know, we want our own special Deerfield version of Dunkin' Donuts or one of that. So I just, I don't know how constructive it is. So that was my two cents.
Thanks, Max.
So I'm gonna add a two cents. And then, because I agree with Max in the sense that we aren't, we want to be sure that each time we make what is more or less restrictive of businesses or potential to restrict businesses, that it's tempered. I do think, however, that this formula-based, for my money, it doesn't seem that it's saying no. It's saying, please play with us. Please, please keep, make the town a partner. And yes, in fact, wouldn't we love our own version of your Dunkin' Donuts? And that if Dunkin' Donuts came tomorrow prior to this and said, we'd like to put a Dunkin' Donuts here, and we said, would you be willing to give us the Haydenville shine? And they said, yes, then we'd be all set. And we'd say, come on ahead. That's a perfect place for Dunkin' Donuts. This just gives us the opportunity to exert a little more influence in that invitation to play with us, invitation to partner with the town, play, that's wrong, to partner with the town. I know I have felt that with, you know, we've had two recent what, formula businesses come to town, and I've felt that more with one than the other, always. So, and I feel that that is, this gives us a little bit of an opportunity, a little bit of a, a little bit bigger voice. So I agree, in the sense I don't want to particularly be anti-business, but I also think that this is asking very nicely, forcefully, businesses and businesses with deep pockets to partner with the town as opposed to just come in and give their, flop their thing in.
Thank you, Rachel. Denise?
I think this just opens up the opportunity to have more of a conversation, you know, just sort of jumping onto what Rachel just said. You know, I don't think it's, you know, I hear what you say, Max, but I, you know, I don't agree with that because I think that, I think that this has been pretty well thought out and I don't think it's restrictive in the sense that you may be thinking. I don't know. I don't, I think it's, I think it's a move in the right direction.
Any other comments?
I think it's important, you know, to, when we, I'm not sure who's drafting this, to be honest. You know, who will draft the ultimate version? But I think it's important to really delineate that these are things that we may look at. Like I want to just reiterate what these guys are saying, that we're not asking to tell them what to do. We're saying that these are some things that we look at, and it's not an automatic no. But I think that in the introduction, like in, you know, when businesses come and they're flipping through our bylaws, I think the first thing they should see is that these are, you know, a very friendly opener. I guess that's what I'm trying to say.
I believe, and planning board, you can correct me if I'm wrong, but if the business meets any of the six criteria, then they must address criteria four, five, and six. And we do have some, we as the planning board have some subjective interpretation of how well they have reduced their standardized facade or reduced or changed their standardized signage. So I think that there is, I mean, we're not letting off the hook. We do have subjectivity with when they come and change their, basically their exterior.
Right.
Is that correct?
I mean, I think it's well-defined what the formula-based definition is as it relates to food service and retail. And so we're looking at, it appears to me, and I could be wrong, the focus seems to be on an aesthetic building and an expectation to meet some communal culture, what have you. But this is outside of the business itself. You know, the business practice, the business model, the compatibility, the need. So I think it might be wise to, I mean, this is just one piece of the puzzle. And that's this building and the aesthetic piece. But a pale-ass shoe store is a lot different than Trader Joe's, right? So I think, I think if we're talking about a limitation, it's limited in what we're expecting it to look like. But not what the business model is, what is the business practice, what is the carbon footprint? You know, what is this? What are their products? You know, I think there's a lot that goes into determining a business coming into the community. And this is just one piece of it, and that's the building and the aesthetics and the outside and the definition of what the formula-based business is. So it's one consideration, I think, out of multiple considerations.
Thank you, Kathy. Let's see, any other discussion, deliberation? So I'll let someone else make the motion. Whoops, we need a motion. Either one way or the other.
We're making the motion to take.
Denise, go, time.
The bylaws to town meeting, the motion I made before that was premature, that one, yeah. That's what I'm making.
Thank you. I'll second that premature motion.
So Denise, are you moving to place this item on the warrant for town meeting? Is that how this is, is that what you're moving to do?
Yes, I am. Thank you, Anne Mary. It's a team effort here.
Yes, excellent, okay.
I second that.
All right, is there any other discussion? Okay, so no other discussion. I want to make sure of that. So roll call, vote, Anne Mary?
Anne Mary, include your I.
Denise?
Denise Mason, I.
Kathy?
Kathy Vitroba, I.
Max?
Max Antis, I.
Rachel?
Rachel Blaine, I.
And Annalee, I. So unanimously, we will put this on the warrant for the town meeting. Thank you all for.
Thank you very much, members of the board. Thank you very much for your unanimous support. That's important and we're very grateful for that. So, thank you.
Thank you for your work.
I'm sorry, Annalee. So prior to when we have the meeting, it'll be discussed as to who will present, maybe Debbie will present and someone else. So you'll have that.
We can also talk further, as Anne Mary was pointing out, we can talk further about, we're very happy to prepare a kind of, like a one-page description for educational purposes for the community going forward between now and town meeting. We'll include that purpose, something like what you received earlier today, and a greater description of what the key elements of the bylaw are and its function. So that's something we can happily talk about. That is something apart from a public hearing. I think that's only a way of working on educating the public and having discussion about it. So we can do that in whatever way you would find most useful. And we're glad to be supportive of all that.
Right.
Yeah. Thank you.
Nine o'clock. If we have a drop dead at 9:15 at the latest, is that okay with folks? Okay, let's really make sure it's 9:15. This is a quickie. Rachel, we want to thank you for your work on the capital improvement planning committee. Rachel is stepping down and Denise Mason has agreed to step up unless somebody else wants to battle with her for the spot, a planning board appointee on the capital improvement planning committee. Otherwise, I'll entertain a motion to appoint Denise to the capital improvement planning committee.
I move that we appoint Denise to the capital improvement planning committee.
All right.
All right.
Second?
Second.
All right, Kathy, Kathy second. Any other discussion? All right, let's see, Max?
Max Antis, I.
Rachel?
Rachel Blaine, I.
Anne Mary?
Amy, include your I.
Denise, we'll have you vote last. Kathy?
Kathy Vitroba, I.
Annalee Wolfko, I, and Denise Mason?
Denise Mason, I.
All right, congratulations, Denise.
Retire and brings.
That's right.
There's a meeting on Wednesday, the 3rd, at 5:30, so you just need to be sworn in before then.
Oh, okay, so I've got to come down to.
Call Barbara.
Call Barbara, okay. Thank you.
We had the next item on new business. Denise, talking about document distribution schedule, you addressed that slightly initially.
Right. Actually, I think I brought it up during John's last meeting, but we had so many other things to talk about. You know, this has happened, I think it's happened on a number of occasions and, you know, I really, half of us are working full-time, Rachel and Mary, I don't know what your schedule is, Max, and Kathy, of course. I find it very difficult to get items sent at the last minute, items sent on Friday, items sent on Monday or Monday at 5:00, 6:00, 7:00. So my proposal is that we, you know, in order to have something put on the agenda for Monday, that there should be a time limit that we receive documents. And I think that it would be a lot more straightforward for everyone. And I think also for town employees, you know, who are distributing these documents. So, you know, I don't know, I mean, I did speak with Annalee about this and I'm not sure whether we came to, just we wanted to discuss that to see how many days prior to the meeting that we should be receiving the documents. So that, you know, so that we were able to actually look at them and, you know, digest everything and have thoughtful discussion so that, you know, we don't put Chris Curtis on the back burner all the time, too. I mean, unfortunately, I saw, I did happen to see Chris and let him know on Friday, said, Chris, we need this document pretty soon so people have a chance to look at it. So I don't know what other people's thoughts are on this issue and if this is something that we as the planning board can make that decision.
I mean, I'm definitely guilty. The minutes didn't go out until today. And it's sometimes hard for me to get on top of. I, you know, I assume people are doing their best, you know, so I'm not sure, I don't know.
I don't think the minutes are the issue, as far as I'm concerned. Minutes and your minutes were great. They were so easy to read. It didn't take that long. I don't think that's a problem. I'm talking about, and you know, for instance, Whitney Hill, you know, really great. And I mean, Jen, it certainly, it's not because of anybody in the town, but I know that, I remember you saying, well, I got this 5:30 the night of the meeting. It's like, how are we supposed to do that? You know, we got a lot of incomplete stuff and, you know, that way, you know, the applicant has to come back multiple times. It's more work for people at town hall and it's certainly more work for us. And it's just not very streamlined. Jen?
There's a couple of things that, I mean, I've been speaking to Annalee about and also talking within, you know, the office and with Casey, and it's process, right? So getting an application in, reviewing the application, making sure that it's complete, making sure that it's the right application for the right, you know, purpose. And before it even actually gets stamped in, so that whole timeline thing that you were talking about before. So the application is not stamped in, it's not accepted until I know that it is complete and that Bob says that it's complete and that, you know, we know that this is something that the board can actually review and have all the documents that are needed, you know, present. That wasn't the case and there isn't anything written down in the town that says that, you know, and I know with ZBA and everything that I was critiqued with and everybody else in the office, with getting documents out to people in time and making it all public, whether it was from the applicant or from somebody from the town. And it's like, what is our guideline and what is our timeframe? And what is our time limit in order to share those documents? And so here I am at home frantically trying to get something up onto the website and get it to the right place. And then people are like, I don't see it. And it's like, well, I'm sorry you don't see it. It's there. And so on and so forth. And so if we could have some sort of guideline to say, let's say, 72 hours prior to a meeting or even a week, it has to be, you know, I know other towns and other towns that I've worked in have that established at time of posting of the meeting. There is nothing more that comes before the board because you need that time to review all the documents and to have ample time to review. As well as for me, it's like for me to review something and to say, you know what, you didn't give me a stamped plan or you didn't give me a signed plan that actually has dimensions on it. Or the application doesn't state which part of the bylaw you're taking it to the board for. So you know what to review for because that's what the board's job is, is to take an application and to know, okay, this is section 5300 and we're going through these stages and it's this section and it's, you know, we're going to go through these steps to see if that criteria is met. So that's something that needs to be done prior to it even getting onto an agenda. And I think that that's what Denise, Annalee, and others, you know, I think.
So Jennifer, what would be your druthers? Like, when do you want everything in? I mean.
I would like to see the application prior to it even coming in. I think that we need to set a standard with people out there so that they're not just waiting for the last second. And we have to start somewhere. So it's like, you need to make an appointment with the town so that Bob and I can sit down and to talk to them and to say, these are the steps. and to talk to them and to say, these are the steps, and, oh, you have to go to the zoning board for this, or you need to go to the seating board for this, or this needs site plan review, or this needs conservation as well. And so you can do things concurrently. But I really think it's important that there's a pre-application meeting that happens. I mean, and it's going to take time for people to learn that, and it's a lot of extra work. But I think it's important, because then they go back out and they go, okay, we need to hire an architect, and we need to have, you know, plans that show X, Y, and Z on it. And when we, when you look at our application, it says what we're requiring.
And? So would it be possible for someone to go to the website, look at the application process, get their ducks in a row, come in for a meeting with you, and then forty-eight hour, you know what I mean? Forty-eight hours later, they could?
They, they could.
If they had their stuff in line, right?
Yes, if they have.
Or the, the close of business three days prior, is that when it needs to be on the, it needs to be posted?
No, it, it really depends, because, I mean, some of this, if it's a, if it's a hearing, it needs to be published, you know? So, I mean, it's like, it, it, there's different guidelines for different processes. But I mean, if we're going to accept an application, it needs to be complete. So it needs to be reviewed first, and that, that information needs to be there before it gets stamped in with the clerk's office. Because right now, everything just gets stamped into the clerk's office, and then it starts the, the clock ticking. And then, and then it just, it has to get seen before the board. So it, there's a timeline, and so then the board has to see it, and then you guys don't have the right information. So then what do you tell them? I'm sorry, you need to come back to the next meeting, because you don't have the details that we need.
So it seems like the clock should start ticking when they sit down with you with what they perceive to be a mostly complete slash, yeah, you know?
Because, because you may find something as a board that you want more than what I see, you know? Because I'm going to say, okay, the application says that you need to have a stamped site plan, you need a lighting plan, you need a site plan, sign plan, you need X, Y, and Z. And they may say to me, I want to waive that. And so there's a part of our application that says that you can waive different things, and the board can accept that waiver. And the board can then say, we're not going to accept that wave, waiver, and we want you to do X, Y, and Z. And so then they go away, and you continue it, and then they come back with that. But if they have everything at the get-go, then it makes it much easier to go through, because you're seeing all of those details by professionals on them. And, I mean, it, it can vary, because you have big projects, you have small projects, you have things that, you know, that it's not, it's not going to be that detrimental, and they don't need to have all that detail. But I don't know, like, just using a recent project, it's like, I think that there was details that were rushed, and it's not, you know, it's not my place to tell the board not to vote on something. But it's like, I just know from my experience that she didn't have the level of detail that I would think would be needed.
It sounds, you know, potentially, I know I've learned that most of our applications, or many of our planning board applications were last reviewed in 2014, I believe it was, with their cover sheet of instructions to the applicant. So potentially, maybe, does this sound reasonable, that Jennifer works on whatever, at least the instruction piece is, which might include a pre-planning discussion with you, Jen? But then, nothing, things don't, things need to come up, come to us within what? Forty-eight hours, two business days, three business days, close of business three days prior to our meeting? What? I say, close of business.
Typically, a meeting Monday, we should, I think we should get it by close of business day on Thursday. You know, that would give people ample time, you know, to look at it before, you know, before the meeting.
And, and by that point, it should be a complete application.
Yeah.
It should have already been reviewed by myself and Bob and taken in by Sue. And we should have all those details, we should have our paper copies, we should have our electronic copies. And then you would have the time as a board from Thursday until Monday to review those details or to come into town hall and, and look at hard copies upon appointment, if we're still in the situation that we are now.
So basically, we're talking about two business days prior to our meeting?
Yes.
Okay, I don't think we need to have any official policy vote or anything on that. I think.
Bob, do you have any comments to that, seeing how it's your office?
Well, no, I mean, that last-minute thing's difficult. Like, Jennifer will look at emails at 5:30, six o'clock, but Sue's leaving at four o'clock. So if something comes in, what might be close of business at five o'clock for somebody? That's really not close of business for us. I come in a lot of times at seven in the morning and leave at three o'clock in the afternoon. And so if it came in even at four, I might not see it to the next day. I don't know, I mean, it's process, it's what it is.
It is process, but honestly, Bob, better than Monday, which is what we have been getting.
Right.
So I, I, I really think if you're, if you're jammed up for whose close of business on Thursday, if we're getting it on Friday, that's a whole heck of a lot better than, than on Monday, when, I, I'm not, you know, that's not why I'm doing it. I get out of.
Period. So let's say we have an application in, and it's not complete, which we're trying to eliminate. But let's say we have an application that's not complete, and then the items come in on Friday, last second. We're going to have to say, we're continuing your hearing, because it, it didn't come in within that timeframe. And we're sorry, and you, you just didn't comply with our timelines.
Correct.
Because.
And Jen, that should be on the website, Jen. You know, for, for each, whatever their, whatever application, there, it should be very clear, the procedure on the website. Or when someone calls to ask a question, you can refer them to that document on the website.
Okay, I mean, I, I, I've been working on one, because I'm trying to, like, pull from different communities, this community, what our practice is, what we want. Like, it says we want, you know, a full set of plans for each board member. I don't think that that's appropriate in this day and age, like, that much paper. Like, we have electronic copies, we have, you can come into town hall if you want something specific, I can print it for you. You know, there's just certain languages that are on the application that needs to be adjusted for today. But, but I agree with you, Denise, it needs to, we need to have a set procedure and to move forward with that, so that we can have these complete applications at the get-go, because there's so many things that are just being overlooked. And now that we have a full staff, it's, it's easier to, to manage, even though it's a lot of work.
Right, good, sounds like we have agreement with that. Well, and in fact, there was something that was received much less than forty-eight hours prior. So that's the A and R on Five Industrial Drive. So we'll put that off to our next meeting, as well as the planning board, select board conversations that I have. The clock is ticking, I understand, for Five Industrial Drive. But hopefully, if Jennifer has the meeting, and Jen and Bob take a look at it and feel that it's comprehen, you know, complete before it comes to us again, that would be great.
Also, more trainings that I, you know, I, I want to look into, that the MMA has, and there's the, oh, gosh, I'm drawing a blank on the name, but there's, there's, there's trainings that, that we can send the board members to, to talk about what an A and R is, and, and how to move forward with it, and how to look at plans.
I'd really like to hear about those. And that can be something that could just be distributed by email to let us know, too. That's great, that's great.
And then, you know, to do the training, because, I mean, it's like, we get put between sort of this hard place that the, the board needs to make the decision, but yet, you know, Bob doesn't want to take full responsibility of looking at a plan. It's like, you all need to know how to read plans and to, and to see, you know, what, what does our zoning bylaw say, and what do you have to look, look at, at, in the plans as far as step backs and, and square footage and area?
I don't, I don't want to miss something that, you know, I need you guys to also, you know, I might catch something you might miss, or you might catch something that I missed.
Well, I think it's quite likely, you're the.
No, I mean, it's easy to miss something, yeah.
And the thing is that, that's why, I mean, it's certain people have their own expertise, you know, that, that they, they, they know how to read plans. And I'm not an engineer, I'm not a planner, I'm, I learned it all from just my, my building commissioner before coming to Deerfield, you know, he would just teach me how to read plans. And so that's how I learned. And so you, you know, you all, you look at plans, and you, everybody gets a different idea. It's like, oh, okay, you can, you can take a look at the area and the details that are on it, because you're putting the, you know, your trust in the engineer or the architect, whoever has made these plans, that it's correct. Whereas I always double-check with our own bylaw. You know, have our eyes on it to make sure that it's exactly what we need.
That's good, all right, I think we're going in a good direction. All right, our next meeting, if we continue to meet on a monthly basis, would be April 5th. We certainly have the accessory apartments, which may take some discussion. Coming back to actually looking at solar and the site plan review, and also then definitely the A and R for Five Industrial Drive and anything else. So, I mean, April 5th is going to be another cramped meeting, unless we decide to try to have something sooner?
Ann Lee, remember, we had that discussion of whether or not you wanted to ask the board, whether they wanted to meet and have hearings on one date, and then other business on another date? I don't know what.
We could do that, yes. That wouldn't be.
I just, I'm sorry, I've, I have a question. So if we do that, so for instance, it's almost nine thirty, that's two and a half hours. If we do that, will it reduce the time of our meetings?
It has, has to.
Yeah, I mean, to me, it's, I'm, I'm free, so it doesn't matter. But I, I know for the, you know, others, does it make a difference?
Anne Mary, Rachel, Max?
I mean.
There's always a bit of a push before a town meeting. And, you know, so I think that's, I, I, I'd rather meet more. And I think that when I hear somebody's concerned about something, it helps me to focus a bit more. I don't mind, I don't want to make two meetings a month a regular thing. But I do think that if we're bringing a lot of things before the town, I think that we ought to be very thorough. So that would be my, I would throw my hat more in that. I think you are right, we get Chris here, and, but, and we kind of jump through. I've got a plan to go through those again, just to be more thoughtful. But I don't always see things the way, I don't, in that moment, I'm like, oh, yeah, that totally makes sense. I brushed by the sixty-day thing, because I assumed that that was a, that's like, that's how it's always been. It's like the pot roast in the pan, you know? I, I, that's how she always cut the pot roast that way. So anyway, I, I think it's good to work on it together.
So the fifteenth through the twenty-second, does anybody?
I can't do it the twenty-second, so.
The fifteenth it is.
Okay, and we'll focus for sure on solar, accessory apartment, site plan review. That, that's, you know, if we try to have.
If we can have a, because we have to have a public hearing before we can do anything more with any of those. So that, that's the issue.
Okay, good, all right, thank you all very much.
It's seven o'clock?
Yes, seven, yes, okay.
And then also the fifth?
Yes.
Okay, I just have to do my Zoom thing.
All right, may we have a motion to?
I move adjourn.
Everybody, yes, unanimous? All right, thank you all very much. Bye-bye.